Good evening, everyone. Today is November 12th at 6:01. I'll open our city council meeting here in North Liberty. Tracy, could you start off with a roll call, please?
Leibl.
Here.
Park.
Here.
Sittig.
Here.
Smith.
Here, remote.
Wason.
Here.
Thank you. Item three is approval of the agenda. There are no changes to the agenda, so could I have a motion for consideration, please?
So moved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Any questions? On favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Agenda is approved. Item four is a lengthy but helpful consent agenda. Again, there's nothing on there changing. Does anyone want to take anything off of there to discuss separately? See, none can have a motion for consideration, please.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Park, seconded by Wason. Any questions? On favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Consent agenda carries. Item five is time for public comment. If there's anyone in the audience wishing to address the council, now is the time to do it on any item that is not already on our agenda. Seeing no rush for council comments, I will now close the public comment time period. Item six is our engineer report. Josiah, how's it going?
Good. Thanks, Mayor. A couple of updates for you out at Centennial Park. If you're out there, you'll see a lot of the interior columns on the building are still in progress, as well as the foundations for the new stage are still underway. A lot of the underground work inside the building is starting to wrap up, which is good because that means they're going to move into, starting to prepare some of the floor slabs over that yet this year, or some of the, once all that mechanical work is wrapped up. The underground water and sewer connections are, have started, so that's going to be, what's going to get those utility connections from the building out to the city's existing utilities out in our street right away. So that's a key component, and that's underway. The delivery of the structural steel is also in the works, and that's still planned to start up here in the next couple of weeks, so looking good there. I'm going to give you a couple of quick updates on design phase projects because these are nearing the end of the design phase, and we're going to be heading into bidding these. North Liberty Road Trail is wrapping up. That's going to be submitted to the DOT next week. That'll be a DOT let project in February, so that's planned for construction next year. Freedom Park Trail Improvements is also going out for bidders next week. That's a local bid, so we'll get bids back in December and then look at having you results at your first meeting in January to award construction contract at Freedom Park Trail. I was going to give you a couple of quick updates. There is the pre-construction agreement between the city and the DOT for the upcoming work at the Penn Street Interchange. Just as a reminder, the DOT is bidding, is bidding the first package of the bridge work this winter, and that'll start probably early spring. They'll be, they'll basically be two full years of construction on the interchange for the bridge and all the ramps and everything, so throughout 2025 and 2026. Like I mentioned, the bridge will be replaced, so there'll be a lot of, like, shifts in traffic and temporary pavement as they're doing different various parts of it. All four ramps, the two on and the two off ramps are all being reconstructed. And so, as a reminder, there, each ramp will be closed one at a time at some point, and there will be detours associated with that, but that's kind of the big picture, so that agreement's on, we'll talk about that later, but that's what's coming up with the bridge project. I also wanted to give you an update on the Forever Green Road Extension Design Study. The last couple of weeks, myself and the city of Corville engineer have been met with the DOT, a number of representatives from the DOT and the FHWA to plan out and talk through the process. There's a lot of parties involved in the earmark funding from a lot of different directions, so we're trying to navigate that and have those pre-meetings so we know, and they know exactly what we want to do and what needs to be submitted. So we've had two good meetings, and I think we have a plan forward on everything that they all need in order to get that Phase One project started. That's it, Mayor. Let's just questions?
Any questions for Josiah? Thanks very much. Next item on the agenda is our city administrators' report. Ryan, I'll turn this over to you.
Good evening. Thank you, Mayor. A few things on my end. Our team right now is anywhere from knee to waist deep in budget prep. We're, hard to believe, we're planning already for July of 2025, and we'll be ready to have some in-depth discussions with the city council in January. But between now and then, we'll be working on operating, not only the operating budget, but capital projects and then the long-term planning for some of those more significant Next week, November 19th, a week from today, Tom Seelick is hosting his annual North Liberty Lunch in North Liberty at South Slope, hoping you can join us. You should have received an email on that, you can RSVP through that email. And then lastly, at our last meeting, we were able to honor our fire chief for an award he received. In the meantime, our library director also received some recognition that I wanted to mention tonight. Jenny Garner received the Iowa Library Association's Distinguished Leaders Award, and one of the comments the association made is that Jenny's an invaluable mentor and leader for libraries across the state and throughout the nation. Many of you know Jenny gets invited to these conferences to speak, and then she also gets free registration, which is helpful, but she really does a lot of good work, not only in North Liberty, but around the country and even around the world. She spoke in Australia earlier this year at a library conference. So we're fortunate to have her, as well as so many others on our team, so I wanted to make sure and recognize her this evening. And that's what I have tonight, Mayor, unless there are any questions.
Thanks, Ryan. Are there any questions for Ryan?
Do you have your top 10 list ready to go for lunch?
Working on it.
It's like a holiday treat, isn't it, Paul?
It is.
Item eight is the mayor's report, and I'll start off with our proclamation, which is National Hunger and Homelessness Awareness Week. Whereas Johnson County faces an unprecedented number of households experiencing homelessness and hunger each day, and whereas this proclamation seeks to foster understanding and empathy for those affected by those critical issues and to inspire action and advocacy on behalf of people with food insecurities and who lack a permanent home. Through collaboration, education, and advocacy, we can work towards sustainable solutions that address the root causes of food insecurity and homelessness. And whereas together, we can create a more compassionate society that prioritizes the well-being of all of its members, ensuring that no one is left behind in the struggle for basic human needs. Realizing food insecurity and housing stability are essential for a prosperous and healthy community, and whereas the realities of hunger and homelessness affect thousands of adults and children in our community every day. The North Liberty Food Pantry reports almost 18,000 visits and deliveries over the past fiscal year, along with Shelter House reporting nearly 34,000 nights of shelter provided for those experiencing homelessness. And in one of the coldest nights of the year, last winter, 24 of our neighbors slept outside due to not having a home. And whereas food insecurity and hunger stems from a lack of financial security and the high cost of living, and whereas homelessness persists due to a shortage of accessible, affordable, and right-sized housing with and without supports. And whereas numerous organizations in North Liberty and Johnson County at large are dedicated to supporting individuals experiencing poverty and homelessness, and whereas while we have made significant strides in addressing hunger and homelessness through collaborative community efforts, we must continue to develop resources that meet the needs of individuals with hope, dignity, and opportunity. Now therefore be it resolved that we, the North Liberty City Council, do hereby proclaim November 17th through the 23rd, 2024, as Hunger and Homelessness Awareness Week in North Liberty, and urge all citizens to recognize the vital roles we each play in making a difference in the lives of adults and children who experience hunger and homelessness in our community. Last couple of things I'll share, just don't share too much about all of the things that I take part in, but I was honored to be a speaker at the Court of Credit Union's groundbreaking and to welcome them. The remarks that I had prepared coincidentally fell in line with what their executive director commented on as well, so welcome to them, and it was great to be a part of that a couple of weeks ago. And I wanted to take an opportunity to, I know it's a few weeks before Thanksgiving, but to thank all of you up here at the table, both to my left and to my right. There's a lot going on in our communities respectively that we all have a hand in, not just those of us up here, those of you in the audience that are representing nonprofits, those of you that are here supporting others in our community, and I wanted to have an opportunity to thank you. If you saw in our council packet, there's some pretty neat things happening, and our staff and our community reaches into parts of our community that might not otherwise have that connection. I thought it was pretty neat. The Good Neighbor Book Club is a perfect example of that. Our police department in their report reported tracking down some suspicious trick-or-treaters outside, and all of the events that we have at the library are just some examples of how that happens. And if you get a chance to read through our report, speaking to you in the audience and online, I assume everybody up here has, our police officers, our police departments report, there's a lot of detail on what the training that they go through and the support that they provide throughout our community, so I thought that was time for that to have been said. Otherwise, I am going to pass this on. Yes? Oh, sorry about that. I buzzed right over the homelessness, and you want to say a few words? I apologize for that.
Thank you, Mayor. My name is Rachel Carr. I am the chair of the Local Homeless Coordinating Board. And before I kind of reflect on my comments, I do want to say longtime resident Mark Surtur used to accept this proclamation, so just wanted to honor him in this moment. We are deeply grateful to the city of North Liberty for highlighting the important issues of hunger and homelessness in our community. We also appreciate the city council's continued financial support for those vital initiatives year after year, and we are proud of the progress that we have made, and we recognize that there is still work to be done. As food insecurity and homelessness continue to affect many individuals and families, the Johnson County Local Homeless Coordinating Board feels a strong responsibility to advocate for the well-being and safety of all of our residents. In a community as thriving as North Liberty, it is difficult to accept that anyone may go to bed hungry or lack a safe place to call home. We know that addressing these challenges requires all of us to come together. National Hunger and Homelessness Awareness Week serves as a reminder of our shared responsibility to support those in need, raise awareness, and extend compassion. By working together, we can build a future where everyone in North Liberty and Johnson County at large has access to food, housing, and the dignity they deserve. Let us stay motivated to take meaningful action and work together to ensure that every neighbor has the opportunity to thrive. Thank you.
Rachel, thank you. Apologies for the delay there. Did you guys want to take a photo, receive the proclamation?
Yes.
Okay, let's do it.
Okay. Perfect. You should get a hug. I love how you guys, they're all pretending they don't work here. Okay. I'm going to get the flag in Ryan's head. One.
She had a goal there.
Got it. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Item nine, the council reports, and I'll open this up for all of you and to let our community know what you've all been involved in over the past three weeks now on behalf of the city.
All right. October 25th, I attended the Johnson County Affordable Housing Coalition Community Meeting. Noel Marcus, the CEO of Nesterly, which is a home-sharing app, it connects people who may have a room in their home available to people who are looking for an inexpensive place to live. So it's really an interesting presentation. I did attend the Court of Credit Union groundbreaking and share your welcome of them. I went to the ambassador gathering last week, the North Liberty Neighborhood Ambassadors. The OG ambassadors, as they call themselves, were, it was their last function, I guess, as a group, and one of the first for the new cohort, so that's an exciting program. I'm excited to see change and evolve. And you talked about the library and all the things going on there. I'm going to plug the Living Room Conversations that's happening on Thursday night. I will be there. It's a political peace building, essentially trying to get people to start talking to each other again rather than yelling at each other. And last but not least, I want to shout out to all of the kids who auditioned last month and those who, congratulate those who will be going to the Allstate Music Festival next week. There are a number of them from this area, and I know the hard work that goes into that, so congratulations to them all.
Thanks, Eric.
I'll go next, I guess. I attended the Emergency Management Seminar in Des Moines. Couple, few takeaways from that, you know, if we do end up in an emergency situation, that everyone document everything that's happened, take a lot of pictures. This is so we can, you know, get our FEMA funding. And one of the interesting things, you know, Iowans are so quick to help. Sometimes when a disaster rolls through a tornado or whatever, your neighbors are already in your yard, you know, cutting trees up for you before you even have the chance to take a picture, you know? So document, take pictures, and then for the city, if we don't have a plan for, you know, funding donations and whatnot, if there isn't one in place, a scammer will do it for us, but we probably would prefer that not to happen. And Johnson County also has an emergency management coordinator, so that's, we're fortunate for that. I attended also the Court of Credit Union, welcome to them, the Heritage Christian School Veterans Day Ceremony. That was a touching ceremony, and just reminded of, you know, our community has a rich history of military service, and we should be, we should be proud for that. So thank you to the invite to them, and then I'm sure Brian will touch on it too, but, you know, rooting on the Liberty football team as they head up to these state playoffs at the Dome, Cedar Falls, so excited about that.
Thanks, Paul.
I guess that's it. That's my turn then. Yeah, so I did recognize not only the football team, but all the fall activities, I think the last time we were up here. And so to your point on music and speech and band and cross-country and golf and all the fall activities, I think it's just really a great representation of how community comes together, whether it be players, participants, coaches, administration staff, volunteers. It takes a village to make those things as successful as they are, whether it be football or arts or music. So a special note of recognition from me for the, all of those efforts, because it's not just the football team. It's not just the band kids. It's not just the art that goes on. It's all the parents and support behind it from a community perspective. So taking a moment to recognize that, I think is important. Extend my welcome to the Court of Credit Union. I think we were all there. I did also attend the Next Stage Beam signing, so thank you for that opportunity. And another, in connection to that, check presentation from True North to the city of North Liberty. So I want to take this opportunity to again recognize that contribution and their commitment to this community. I attended the Corridor Business Journal Coffee Connections, so I wanted to thank those folks for hosting out there. I attended the Iowa City Area Sports Commission Breakfast at the Extreme Arena, which was a terrific event, and just the impact that sports has in this particular community was well-received and a great message. And then earlier this morning, I met with representatives from Senator Grassi's office, just to continue to build relationships on, at the federal level as well, on behalf of the city. So thank you to those, to those folks for their time and their contributions. That's it for me, Mayor.
Awesome. Thanks, Brian.
Mayor, I attended the Better Together 2030 Executive Board Meeting. Lot coming out of there, but most recent or things to consider and think about will be the award ceremony that's annual. Many of, many of you went last year. We'll certainly get that date to you once that's set in stone, but that'll be coming up here as we enter the wintertime. And then also the Think Iowa City Board of Directors Meeting. Just reminding the sports coalition that Brian had referenced, just reminding them that, you know, North Liberty, although small, is mighty, and we have offerings to assist and help in a lot of those regional asks and bids that they are making to a number of sports, whether it be high school, you know, state events, or regional events like we see, or even World Cup, you know, bicycle racing. North Liberty is a partner, and we are happy to partner in those and just want to see some of those activities come our way as well. So I had a good, healthy conversation there, and just reminding them that our city is open and a willing partner there.
Thanks, Brett.
And just to touch on the emergency management, I actually asked Ryan to forward you the Elected Officials Guide to Emergency Management for the state of Iowa. It's interesting to read, and stuff, so, and ongoing, you know, one of the things they have to do is a hazard mitigation plan, so you can have money from FEMA, and that's just about done and stuff. And then just congratulations to the city staff. The golden turkey hunt really has people out. I had seen people across the street from me looking underneath the thing, the tree rings and stuff. I don't think they found the first one yet, so.
I feel not smart enough to participate in that when I see those clues, so I let others that are smarter than me go to gunner benches or wherever they need to go, so thank you all very much for those updates. Tiana, how about we sell some bonds? That sound good? Item A is Resolution Number 2024-104, and this is a resolution awarding general obligation corporate purpose bonds, Series 2024A. It's all yours, Tiana.
Good evening. It's great to be here again. That's my first time in this beautiful new building, so congratulations for that. Amazing. We did sell bonds today, the 2024A General Corporate Purpose Bonds, General Obligation Corporate Purpose Bonds. They were rated AA3, which is the same rating that you received at your last bond issue. Moody's says that you have a strong local economy and cites growth in population and full value per capita as some strength of yours. We did sell 9,195,000. Because of the market we're in, we received some premium, so you actually got $9,813,000 in proceeds to spend on projects, roughly about half and half between City Hall and Parkland and Penn Meadows. We did receive, that is greater than the number that we intended at first, just that premium we kept for future projects, so you will have about $555,000 more than we went into the bond issue anticipating. You did get a TIC of 3.46. We had estimated a 3.47, so well done. We also did, actually, your last sale was a 3.45. So, you know, the market's been kind to you. You did receive six bids. Robert W. Baird was the leading syndicate. Usually, there are several banks in that syndicate, but at the time of printing this, we just didn't have that information yet. So if it's something that you're interested in, I can certainly get it for you, but you got bids from Baird, Piper, TD Securities, Northland, Stifel, and KeyBank. And again, Baird is the lowest, and we would recommend that. When I left today, it didn't look like there were, I think there was one other issuer potentially in the market, but it hadn't sold, so I'm wondering if that deal actually didn't go forward today. But any other information I can certainly gather for you later, but I would definitely recommend that you award to Robert W. Baird, and I would answer any questions that you might have for me.
Thank you for that overview and for a little context on what they sold for last year and what's in the market. I don't have any questions for you. I've been through this a few times. Do you all have any questions for Tiana while she's here?
Just wonder if you could explain the premium a little bit more. How did we get more than we asked for?
So basically, we're in a relatively low-rate market, so yields are in the threes. However, investors want to invest at higher rates, 4%, 5%. So when that happens, you sell your bonds at the 4% or 5% rate, but in order to compensate you for the fact that you're paying higher interest than what yields would dictate by the market, they have to pay you more than a dollar per bond. So what that means is, you know, you're selling your bonds at 100% or 3% or 105% of face value to give you that money upfront to compensate you for the fact that your interest payments over time will be greater than if they were sold at the 3% yield. So it's, it's a mathematical equation that we're generally indifferent to because you get to have that money upfront for more projects. And so, and I don't want to be misleading when I say more than we anticipated. I mean, we kind of know that we're in a premium market and that there will be more proceeds. It's just, it's difficult to guess what it's going to be because it really just depends on who buys the bonds and whether, you know, what, how they're going to price them. So we imagine that there would be some, we couldn't really quantify ahead of time what there would be, and we always make the decision whether or not we want to give back those proceeds and sell less bonds, or if we want to keep them and use them for projects. But, you know, a 3.46, knowing that you're going to continue to do more work around the city, it makes good sense to go ahead and keep that money while you have it. And the other nice thing is that these were sold subject to bank qualification, meaning that you sold less than $10 million in par amount, and so for you to get that $500,000 extra proceeds help you, helps you sort of keep your bond issues under that $10 million going forward. So, you know, you got a little bit more proceeds and can still maintain bank qualification. So there's really not much of a reason not to do it, not to keep those proceeds, but that's where that premium comes from. It's just the balance between market rate and the actual, the borrowing rate on the bonds, if that makes sense.
Thank you.
Great question, Eric.
Anything else?
Any others for Tiana? Thank you again.
Absolutely.
Safe travels.
Thank you.
Great to see you again.
Likewise.
I know. Could I have a motion for consideration, please?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Sittig, seconded by Wason. Anything else, Ryan? We're good? Okay. Any questions or discussion? Tracy, could I have a roll call, please?
Wason.
Aye.
Leibl.
Aye.
Park.
Aye.
Sittig.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Did you catch that?
Sure did.
Okay, thank you. Motion carries five to zero. Item 11 is American Rescue Plan Act ARPA funds, and item A is a discussion and possible action regarding the remaining unallocated, unallocated ARPA funds. Ryan, I'm going to turn this over to you to help lead us through this discussion.
Sure, thanks. So I'm hoping that, I'm hoping that we can, that you folks can make a couple of decisions tonight about our ARPA fund moving forward. One is the affordable housing money that we put forth, $400,000 earlier this year. As you all know, we attempted to get a significant tax credit project going, and that just didn't happen. It was a very competitive market. We didn't, and as a result, we weren't awarded, or we, we being the potential developer for the North Liberty Project, wasn't awarded. So we're, we've been having conversations with Ellen McCabe at the Housing Trust Fund, and she's here this evening. Thank you for being here, and we'll answer any questions that this group has. But what we're proposing essentially is that the Housing Trust Fund goes out and does, I'll call it a special round, and it might not be the technical term, but a special round of, of funding specific to a North Liberty project and keeping the proposal vague enough where it could be someone coming in to, think Habitat Humanity, to purchase lots, or maybe an existing group that owns affordable units in North Liberty that needs rehabbed, or really anything. It sounds like maybe a couple of groups might be working together on a potential proposal, so I think the idea is to keep it vague enough so that we have interest to use these funds in North Liberty. And so the question is, are you okay with that moving forward? The subsequent question then would be, is the $400,000 amount still? still acceptable to this group? Leading into our discussion about the $300,000 we have available. And so that would be the second thing I'm hoping to get some direction on tonight is what do you want to do with that $300,000? We talked about a couple of options last time. Tried to articulate a group of options that would be viable. Remember, we have to have this money obligated by the end of the year. And by obligated, it does have to be under contract or we do have to have a purchase order or some sort of proof that we have made a purchase or are making a purchase before the end of the year. So I think two, two things we need, or two items we need direction on. The housing proposal and whether that's satisfactory. And I'm sure Ellen can articulate it much better than I just did. And what do you want to do with the remaining $311,000?
So let's start with the $400,000. And I guess, Ellen, thank you for coming and being here for two reasons tonight. But if you could just provide an update on how things are going. We're only talking about right now, you guys, the $400,000 that we've already allocated to them. It's not part of the list of things we still need to talk about yet.
Well, thank you. And if I can backtrack, thank you for the proclamation earlier this evening. The needs of the hungry and the homeless run deep in my background. I ran shelters here in Johnson County for youth. I served as the director of the Crisis Center, which is now Community Crisis Services and Food Bank, which has a robust food bank delivery system to address the issue of hunger. I now serve on the Local Homeless Coordinating Board after founding it back in the 90s and serving as the first chairperson. So this is part of my core. Regarding your ARPA funding, as indicated in your packet and by your city manager, the existing commitment, the idea that we had to support 44 new homes isn't going to happen. And the trust fund, I want you, I want to be clear. The trust fund added $1.2 million to your money for that commitment. We did our best. At this point, what we're suggesting is that we recruit other proposals. As included in the packet, we will request proposals that serve households with low incomes. And as with all applications, this is what we do four times a year for 20 years now. Okay, so this is, this is what we do. And we will recruit projects that either create new housing, housing that either doesn't exist, probably not, isn't built yet, but isn't contracted as affordable and make it affordable, or preserve units that are affordable through rehabilitation. And then, as with every application, we look to have the applicant, the project leverage other funding. So we would take your money. We probably would add some trust fund money. And then that the applicant has to show some skin in the game also, either through borrowing or reserves that they have. So we do expect to make at least $1.5 million available in this very next round. So we would package it together. We're going to make one point, you know, whatever that number is that the trust fund is going to make available on November 22nd. And then we would have the North Liberty funding on top of that and encourage people to consider putting a proposal together for housing in North Liberty. Grateful for the staff leadership that I've been working with. I was here two years ago when you made your decision to commit the funding. So they've been extremely helpful throughout the process and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Ellen, you just mentioned the 1.5 million from the Housing Trust Fund. Is that in, that's in addition to ours? So a combined $1.9 million for projects just in North Liberty?
No.
Tell me.
The 1.5 million would be any project in Johnson County.
In Johnson County.
Right. And that number is loose. I'm just, and I think it's low ball. So this is what we do every quarter. We announce a funding round. And in this specific funding round, I expect it to be rather large.
Okay.
So we would say, we have the trust fund's 1.5 million and we have the North Liberty funding. And if someone wants to put together a package that looks at the North Liberty funding, the trust fund could also put in money now or at a date in the future.
Got you. And that was a question I originally had until you just mentioned that 1.5. So you may not, you won't know this answer exactly. But to give us some context, what will $400,000 turn into the developer generally and the Housing Trust Fund? How much will it, how much will it increase? Will it double? Will it triple? The Housing Trust Fund, might they kick in $100,000, 200, 400? And the developer itself? What have you seen historically? And I know that there are a broad number of projects that are in consideration here.
Generally, $1 invested by the trust fund yields at least $8 of housing. But we sometimes have numbers larger than that. $1 equals $15. $1 equals $20. It just depends.
Okay.
But those larger projects like the Lytec project, which is lost and I'm still mourning.
Yeah, yeah.
That would have been a big, a big bang for the buck.
Yeah, okay. Okay. You guys have any questions for Ellen? Specific to the $400,000 already allocated to them?
The $400,000, so you do, you know, a million and a half in Johnson County. Does that $400,000, is, are we guaranteed to have something that applied in North Liberty? Or is that $400,000?
We're going to find a use for your money in North Liberty.
Got it.
And if it doesn't happen in this current round, we have time.
With more time.
You have already, in my understanding, you have committed the money. We have a contract. I've taken the money. We're going to, we're going to get this spent in two years.
Yes.
To, in a good way.
Go right ahead, Counselor.
So Ellen, again, I appreciate all the work that, and the partnership that you've had with our city. You came a while ago with a list of options. We had great conversation, probably one of the better conversations that counsel has had on affordable housing in North Liberty in quite some time since the renovation of our apartment complex there on Penn Street, which was a great partnership with, with your Housing Trust Fund as well. My take from the last time that we met and consensus and what I was in favor of, I'll start with what I was in favor of. Something that was, one, going to leverage additional funding, whether that be federal, which is what we went after and didn't get, or the Housing Trust Fund money, which you've just explained. So I'm very happy to hear that. But then also with a long-term impact, not just a short-term impact, something that is larger, something that's going to have a longer-term impact within the city. And one example that I'll use as the contrary, that is not a long-term impact, would be rental assistance. I am, with this money, I'm not in favor of a rental assistance program for paying of rent. It would be for actual construction of additional affordable housing units in the city. And those are my comments, Mayor. Thank you for the flexibility here tonight.
You're welcome.
I absolutely have no bandwidth for rental assistance. I agree with you. You wanted a long-term investment. What we do at the trust fund isn't, we push applicants to agree to affordability for long-term. So if they put down 10 years on their application that they're willing to commit this property to be affordable to people with low incomes, we say, 10 isn't really very long. Let's try 20. That kind of thing. This, this idea of us opening it back up, it includes homeownership. So one possibility that a group is very interested in is buying lots and then building homes for, that's, that's a long term. You can't get much longer than homeownership.
And that application process is due when?
We will have this round. We'll announce it on November 22nd. And applications will be due the first week of January. And then the board will make final decisions at the end of January. And if nothing comes up for North Liberty that's acceptable or no one applies, we'll do it again.
Thank you.
I guess my, this may be a silly question to ask you, Ellen, but is $400,000 enough to make a lasting impact without the Lytec dollars in play?
We're going to put your money to work. It won't be a big sexy building with 44 apartments.
I get that.
You've done this a few times, haven't you? That's a good answer.
I'm still mourning the loss of that building. And that property is, can still be in play. It just isn't going to be with your ARPA money. We're not giving up on that. And we've done five of those. So without.
Got you. Any other questions for Ellen? Specific to those dollars already allocated?
I just have a quick question to Ryan. So item 26, we have to spend?
Yes.
So just somewhere maybe, you know, the beginning of the year. If it's not, you know, we'll need to come up with like a Plan C so that we?
We do this four times a year, so.
We'll celebrate hopefully one of these quarters soon and then get this off of our plate. Okay.
Thank you.
So now we'll, we'll go back to the original intent, the OG on the remaining $300-ish thousand dollars. And the discussion, as Ryan put in the memo, needs to be final tonight. We've got three ideas. One that staff brought to us at our last meeting. And thanks for the couple of extra suggestions that have been put out there. So it's now a matter of discussing those a little bit more individually. And I think maybe just the easiest way to go about it, Ryan, might just be how it's in the packet. So would you mind leading us through this discussion? And I think, yeah, I'll just let, turn it over here for you.
Fair enough. So there, there are four options here, four ideas. And the first is United Action for Youth. You saw an email from those folks requesting some assistance for a transitional living program that they had previously, if I, and I think I understood this correctly, but they had previously been able to service this program with grant funds. Not only, they looked to expand the program. Not only did the expansion funds not come in, neither did the funds for the existing program. And so now they're looking to raise funds to set up the existing program from last year. We, the, the request, I think in the, they're looking for 100,000 in total. I believe they have received some funding. I can't speak to how much. I think Iowa City was in for around 20. And there was another group in for, I think, close to 25 or that they were contemplating 25. So that's an option. We would, we would probably recommend somewhere around $5,000 to help them and hope they get some other support along the way. Number two is economic development, focusing on an economic development initiatives. And it's very general in the packet. I think if this is a route you folks want to go, we would work with Greater IC and our team to really develop a program and bring it back to you for consideration. Some ideas that were kicked around were small business assistance, targeted impact grants. So think of grants for, you know, a specific industry. One that I know Katie and her group are working on now is in the daycare field. Workforce support. I think that the list could be pretty lengthy. What we would do is dig down a little bit more and get you some details back for you to consider and then go from there. But what we could do is initiate a contract immediately with Greater IC for a certain amount of funds. And that would consider our dollars obligated. Third would be adding funding to the affordable housing option. I don't think I need to go into any more discussion there. And then lastly, we continue to advocate that funds in some shape or form be used for the community center as that facility continues to age and is certainly one of the hotspots in our community. And the last comment I would make on this, whatever we decide, once we obligate it, after December 31st, our obligation period is over. So if we say, let's throw another, and I'm just picking things here, but let's throw another $200,000 to affordable housing and we can't get that spent in 2025 or 26, that money will go back to the federal government. Now Ellen would never allow that to happen. She's, that's just one example. But my point being is, once we obligate it, that's where it goes.
All right, thank you. I think I'd like to start with the UAY request and kind of talk about this individually. And just to kind of get your sense on, and this is just a consensus on staff's recommendation of a $5,000 contribution.
Yeah, Ryan, I just had one question earlier this morning during one-on-one. What do we have committed or allocated from 2025 from the general budget for UAY already?
I'm sorry. I have to look that up myself. Meet that early in the morning and my?
And then they got away. I understand that.
But we can find that though, I think.
Thank you.
Give us a second.
I would be for giving them the 5,000 and possibly more at a later date. I don't think that affects any of the other, you know, potential projects that we have coming up.
To be clear, this is part of the remaining allocation that we have. So we don't have a later time period to provide more to them on that. I'm not sure if I?
Just in general.
In general?
Yeah.
Okay, okay.
But the 5,000 now as part of?
Yeah. Okay.
So, yeah, I'm also, I think that this was somewhat unforeseen on their part and they've been trying very hard to do some good stuff. The only thing is, it's, this is a one-time deal for that. Because, you know, funding your ongoing project like that is going to be tricky. So, but we need to get them out of a hole right this year and we can do it, so.
Yeah, I'd agree with those comments and thank you to the council. The five, happy to contribute and do believe that it's an important matter. And then with the 2026 allocation, when it comes back up for, you know, the application process, with the understanding that this is separate from the normal budgeting that we generally give from there.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm in favor of the five.
Okay, all right. So take that off of our total for that then. Down to 3.06. Look at us go. So I think the economic development piece might be the newest conversation for us to have. And Brent, I know that this was your idea and we got a little bit of flavor of the intent, both in our packet and also in Ryan's description. What are we missing or is there more that you'd like to elaborate on in that way, if you wouldn't mind?
Yeah, I appreciate, again, the flexibility here remotely, Mayor. I know it's hard to manage with the delay, so thank you. Yeah, not, not a lot to add. I would say that, you know, we've had the relationships built with Greater IC for a long time, the relationships with them along with Johnson County Community Foundation that give us the opportunity to even look at something like this. You know, this is a drum that I've been beating since my first term in just hearing from local businesses and folks that are wanting to locate here. You know, we, we don't have a robust or really much of anything as far as incentives or economic development for, for small businesses here. And I think with this one-time funding, it gives us that opportunity that we've not had and may not have again for a while. And just, just something unique. And again, to Eric's point, you know, I really hit, hit the nail on the head last meeting that, you know, I, I feel the same as he does, that this, this money needs to be, needs to have a larger impact than, than just resurfacing a parking lot. That was kind of the intent of the federal government coming out of a hard time of COVID was to have impact. And I think that we have, Mayor. I think that we've spent this money wisely. We've made it stretches as far as I think we can. And I appreciate staff's work through the years in doing these, this research and allocations. the years in doing these, this research and allocations. And we've done a lot of good for the community with the funding that we have, but would really like to see us go out on a good note and make it more impactful with, you know, something that could be long-lasting. Again, back to that conversation of a long-lasting impact for affordable housing, it would be the same here with economic development.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor, if I might comment then as well, because this was some of the research that I had done and sent a few examples over to Ryan to kind of continue this conversation. I'm supportive of this as primarily as much as we invest with affordable housing and making additional investments in our community with United Action for Youth and different things. I really believe that this can kind of accelerate or be a catapult as an investment in the community. So what I did was taking a look at this, and thank you for the extra time to make this decision, because what I would propose or put forth to the group is, with the 206 that's remaining, there's no doubt that the community center also has a. 306, thank you. But the 306 that is remaining, there's no doubt that the community center has a tremendous impact, not only with our residents. I think the packet described 61% of the revenue came from North Liberty residents and 49% of the revenue, or 39%, something along those lines, came from folks outside of the community. So it is a draw, and it does take money to keep those things nice and keeping folks coming back to North Liberty. What I would put forth is, in order to meet some of the items that were outlined in the packet, with 306 remaining, I would put forth 206 to the community center and $100,000 to economic development, whether that be hospitality, tourism, workforce development, small business support or grants. To Ryan's earlier point on, you know, making sure that does make an impact, I think that's a comprehensive view of, hey, we've got some things that we can do here. We can make a good investment in a number of different avenues and resources. Let's do that, and let's really take the time to make sure that it's right, once we do extend that partnership or extend that commitment to the Greater Iowa City folks.
So my question is kind of in the effectiveness of it. Katie, you showed up here tonight, maybe to speak to other things, but you can be here for this conversation. But Ryan, you and I talked about this as well a few times. How effective is, and what is the true need out there for businesses that we're seeing for type of support?
I think that's what we would. Sorry.
Thank you, by the way, for letting us use your mic.
Yeah, no problem. I think that's what we would really want to work with Greater IC to talk about and investigate, what is the need. One of the things that Nancy Byrd and I talked about briefly was the potential for a low-interest loan program. And right away, Nancy was able to say, that's probably not going to be an effective program. You're probably going to need to look more at a grant program to make something work based on the knowledge she has in the business community. So I don't know how effective this would be. I think that we would want to dig down into that a little bit more and see what those needs are. I get the impression from what I'm hearing, we're not looking at just a general grant for anything. We want some, a focus on it or an intention with it and not just, your small business in North Liberty here is $1,000. I assume I'm reading the room on that.
That's, yeah, I agree.
Probably just somebody else calling in.
It is. It's my son.
Right now to do that. Katie, could you help us paint a little bit of context on that? I don't mean to put you on the spot, but you're my to-go-to source on this stuff.
So Nancy and Mackenzie are in Washington DC right now with their Chamber Alliance colleagues, advocating for North Liberty with leadership right there. But so I'm here today to talk a little bit about and answer any questions you have. I would point out that we have a very large data digest that's coming out in two weeks at our annual meeting that'll hopefully help identify the greatest needs. It's a good benchmark that we have now and where we can see where we'll go. We are now operationalizing a $500,000 support grant program with partnership with the Community Foundation in South of Six for underestimated businesses in Johnson County. So that also will impact North Liberty. But those are very targeted grants towards people that identify in specific characteristics that the county has set forth, so BIPOC-owned and low-income. And so we're, we can create grant programs based on any criteria that North Liberty wants to target. We can collaborate with the Community Foundation, or we can use it to help offset and help really drive home some of the interest in the Strategic Investment District that we've talked about. We can work with you as a council to develop the project that you want, and we can be flexible as the Community Economic Development Organization to make it effective for you. Did that answer your question?
Good start.
Okay.
Thank you. So how much, it's kind of the same question I asked for Ellen. How much will 100,000 do? How much would 300,000 do as far as leveraging other dollars? Can you describe to me how that could proliferate and what types of businesses it might benefit? Maybe they're new. How might those dollars be multiplied and brought back into the community?
So we can offer incentive grants where we would say, locate in a specific area, and you're going to receive an incentive grant. We also do matching grants for tenant improvements are often some of the most costly portions of owning a business and really making the space what you need to have an effective business. And then we can also do other leveraging with financing with banks and traditional financing, because people might not have the commercial access that they need. We can provide a low-barrier grant to help them leverage that into lending that they might need. That might just be the ticket to get them the refrigerator that they need to expand their service or the delivery truck, those sorts of expenses that maybe could really expand their reach in North Liberty. And we can be flexible with that as well.
And those grants would go to those businesses? I mean, the first one that you mentioned was a grant for building out or, I don't remember what you said exactly, but those are going to the business owner and indirectly then to the person that owns that property. Would the business have to own that property, or would they be a renter of that and be able to qualify for this?
We can define it however you'd like.
Okay.
And ARPA is pretty broad in terms of how they allow you to define those characteristics. We were very specific with the Johnson County program because that's what they sought. ARPA guidance is pretty clear, and we'd work with your team to make sure that it meets not only their compliance requirements, but your goals and objectives.
Okay.
Quick question, follow-up question, separate topic, but impact with Greater Iowa City. So this is grants for small business and stuff. Can you describe maybe an example or two or how this might be effective supporting the workforce or different areas like that? Like, so I had put forth a couple of different options, you know, like I said, workforce, small business, tourism, hospitality, anything else that you've seen or that you were like, hey, we've got some ideas here, and this could be helpful. Because I think might help create a clearer picture for the council, and then we can say, hey, you know, let's dedicate this $100,000 to Greater Iowa City, and we can work with them to make sure that's effectively impacted.
I think we could have a bigger impact with the 306. But if it is 100, we can do quite a bit with leveraging maybe a workforce attraction program or even a workforce apprenticeship program with different targeted small businesses. So we're working with the HBA now closer than ever. What we're hearing is that they need to train students to be in the trades. We could work with a trades program if that's the direction you want to go. We also have a full-time Community Economic Development Program Manager who has incredible data skills that we can drill down and tell you, these are the needs. And then you can, we can chase some ideas and then come back and really workshop it together.
Yeah, that's great. And those could be earmarked for North Liberty specifically.
Specifically and only, yes.
Yeah, the reason I ask in part is right of University of Iowa City on, just today, on workforce and what they're doing and different things like that. And it's like, it's important.
And I think the North Liberty Hospital, I think, will offer a lot of opportunities that we don't even know yet. We've heard 900 nurse shortage.
Yeah.
Maybe we can work on that. Maybe we can offer incentives to live in North Liberty and work at that hospital. I mean, we can, these funds are very creative, and we can do some cool stuff together.
Yeah, that's, I'm excited about this, if you can't tell. So thank you for the.
Katie, what about the example of the, one of the pillars embedded together with the childcare and what you guys have leveraged for upping the wages of childcare workers as an example?
Yeah, so with the wage enhancement program, we've been able to basically add $2 to every childcare worker that is in a qualified center per hour. So I think you heard me at the joint entities, we've spent about 600,000 on wages so far just this year. And so that's leveraged over, I mean, hundreds of thousands of work hours. But some of the biggest needs that childcare providers have is build out of space to meet requirements and regulations. And they also need staffing, and they need physical locations that can really fit what kids need. We can work with them and do targeted daycare grants. We could do capacity grants. We could put it in the childcare solutions fund that we already have and then use it for either wage enhancement, or we could do specific facility improvements so that workforce can work because kids are taken care of.
Has North Liberty given any money to the wage enhancement program?
No, it has not. Yet.
Do you guys have any other questions on this topic?
Yeah, so how, so if we put some money into economic development and you come up with a project, how would we operationalize if we approved that project? Would it be like, hey, we think this is a good idea. What do you guys think? Or are you just going to do it and say, this is what we spent it on?
We would work with your staff to create and design a program that was, that met the intent that the council had, and we've received direction from Ryan to do that.
And we would bring it back to you. The idea would be if we went down this road, we'd have an agreement on the next agenda with Greater IC obligating these funds, and then we would work on the scope of the project and drill down into that and bring it back to this group for some consensus.
My only question is, is there like an effective amount? Like, how do we come up with the 100,000 to be the effective amount?
I'll jump in here, because I looked at the five. So I did some math prior to, and kind of forgot that it was 311. So I just did some math and said, okay, they, 183 listed, the initial ask from the community center was 300 minus a five. So I just said, you know what? They've got 183 listed in there, two, you know, or $300,000 for a parking lot, 200. So now 206 kind of gets us at least some of these projects or at pretty close on the parking lot. And so then I just took off 100 from there. So 306 remaining, 200 earmarked for projects with the community center, and 100 with the Greater Iowa City is how I came up with the number. Is it enough? I mean, can I, we can put forth more?
Well, it's more than I would spend, so just.
In what category?
Economic development.
In economic development?
I mean, I think if we were going to do that, you know, some of those projects you've talked to actually probably should have been here when we did our other grant process of things. I know a lot of businesses, which would be very difficult to kind of sort out, did receive, you know, money from ARPA, you know, as a separate side. So I'd want to make sure that they were not basically double-dipping.
Oh, yeah, the federal guidelines require that you complete duplication of benefits documentation. So in all the programs we do, we make sure that there's none.
We've had, actually have done, you know, projects where smaller businesses in town, we've done economic development programs on our own as they come up and stuff. So I'm not 100% sure that, you know, some of those things would be really particularly helpful, because I think if those things have come up, they know where to kind of go and look. And we've been pretty successful with those and stuff, so.
But Brian, what are we doing to remain competitive economic development-wise besides our partnerships? I mean, what have we put forth on the table to make North Liberty attractive to businesses? Because I'm not seeing it. And I'm not seeing the investment in anything outside of our investments in Greater IC.
Well, my thought on business is, the first three things of where you start a business is location, location, and location. And we're a little bit handicapped on that right now. I think that eventually they will run out of Highway Six someplace, and they're going to have to come here because we have another nice stretch of highway. So I'm not sure that a lot of that money is going to do a lot of good. So I'd much rather spend it on the community, the things that we need in the community for the North Liberty residents. I'm still in favor of the UAY and stuff, so. But I think as a compromise, you know, I would not spend $100,000, but maybe $50,000 as a start, and then the rest of it would go to your previously mentioned projects for the, for the community center, however.
Are you, are you wanting to be on the community center? I'm not, again, I'm not against us allocating some money to the center, but we talked about more impactful things than the parking lot. So things that were, that were assigned to the swimming pool area or things that are being used. Do you, do you agree there, like, on the list at the community center that it should be spent on, or are we just leaving it up to staff and it's going to pour into an asphalt overlay of the parking lot?
Well, I think it's probably best to not look at it as, which projects do we like and how would we allocate those monies? It's the city's money, and it's going to have some impact on what we ultimately borrow to complete these projects or how we cash flow it. So however you look at it, whether it's 300,000 or $75,000, it will have some impact on the tax rate and the borrowing, on the cost for doing so. So I think that's probably a fairer way to look at any dollars that would be allocated. To say that it's going to a parking lot, I think is a little, not, I'll say misleading facetious, but it's just going to reducing the city's obligation on dollars for improvement in the community, whether it's on a pool, on a parking lot, there's still dollars coming from the same, from the same pot. So on that note, I think it's, personally, I really wasn't coming in here thinking that I'd have a lot of support for the economic development piece of it. And I've said this to Katie in person lots of times. She's kind of the ringer. If you bring her in on a topic, what these dollars can be used for is incredibly beneficial. And I've been a part of a lot of conversations on the programs that she's describing. And I think every dollar that we invest in this, in that effort is going to come back to us in a number of measurable, but more importantly, immeasurable ways in the communities, just like reducing how much we spend on a community center project or Centennial Park. So I think they kind of, they have equal weight in my mind. The dollar amount that we allocate to them, I think, is minutia at this point, whether it's $50,000 or 100,000 or 300,000. I think we can allocate those and do good in our community with any combination.
Mayor, I appreciate that perspective, and Brian, yours as well. I 100% agree. And that's why when I put this forth initially, I tried to look at a number that I thought would move the needle and make that investment that we could see for years on end. And that's where I came up with that $100,000. So my position, I think, is still in that $100,000 space. Brian, really appreciate your comments and the way you look at it. I do. I think this is the investment in the community that we need to make at this time to be part of this region and really put, take a step towards leading those efforts as an investment in the community. And that's where I'm at, the 206 for the community center, the five for the UAY, and 100,000 for Greater Iowa City.
Thanks, Brian.
So I kind of came into this similar to the mayor, thinking that I was not going to have any, the economic development thing was just not fleshed out well enough for me coming in. I think my concern with it at this point is timing and restrictions that we might put on some program. We can put together a great program, and it may be that nobody uses it. And then we get to 2026, and we're sending money back. So I'm concerned about that. I would be in favor of putting some money into the childcare wage enhancement program because that's a program that's up and running, and we know that it'll get spent. But really, I don't know. I have a hard time. We've already allocated the affordable housing money. Otherwise, I have a hard time putting money towards something at this point that is amorphous, and we don't know what's going to happen with it. We don't even know if it works, so.
I will say that we can keep doing more of the same. And you've worked with the chamber and ICAD for many years, but we're a new organization now. Just in the last year, we're doing things differently. We're approaching things differently. You've seen our approach through place-based economic development. And I know that being stewards of these funds, we have the capacity to execute the project that you want, and we learned about this. about this after your last meeting, that there was that interest. And so, we're here to make it a reality. But, I will say, if we keep doing more of the same, we're going to get more of the same results.
I agree.
Yeah.
But you're sure that if we would, you know, partner with you guys and work, and some money that come the end of 2026, it'll be gone, one way or the other, in a way that met the federal requirements?
We wouldn't design a program that wouldn't meet the expectations of ARPA.
My thoughts, I like the idea of helping small businesses in North Liberty. I think Greater IC would do a good job of, you know, helping us find the right place for that money. So, I would be in favor of the $100,000 to that, and the, you know, 200 to the RAC Center, and the five for UAY.
Grant, do I put forth a proposal, or what do I need to do here to?
We're just looking for a consensus. We don't need to take a vote on this. So, so I guess we're, we're coalescing around the idea of 5,000 for UAY, 100,000 for Greater Iowa City, uh, Greater IC, and then the remaining dollars for the community center. Does anyone advocate for any other combination of those dollars, or any, any other thoughts in regards to that combination?
A lot of brain power in that, so I appreciate that, so, you know.
Okay. So, Brent, you can, you can start us off, because we can't see your head nodding, but are you, how do you feel about that proposal?
I, I appreciate Brian's approach in trying to spread this out and, and do the most with what we have left. Although, I would be in favor of more money going towards the economic development, you know, consensus, spread out where it's assisting the, the community center along with economic development. I, I can be brought in line with that. I guess I will reserve additional conversations with the mayor and Ryan on how the community center money will be spent. Wasn't a facetious comment on the parking lot. I just think, back to Eric's point, it needs to be more impactful, and I'm going to stick with that.
Thanks, Brian. So, down the line, the four of you that are here, how do you feel about the proposal out there?
I'm in favor.
Good, good. Eric?
Um...
And I think that, I think this money can go towards the Wage Enhancement Program at, at a minimum.
Oh, sure, no, I get that.
Yeah, okay.
I, I think Brent brings up my point last time about making a splash or impacting change. Unfortunately, we're in a position now where we don't have those other projects ready to, teed up and ready to go. We do have the parking lot project teed up and ready to go, so I'm...
Well, we don't actually. We would be moving these dollars into the Centennial project, which is teed, which is teed up and ready to go. And then, it just, the monies would flow back to the community center, in those dollars that we would ultimately need to use for, for that project, or those projects.
That's correct. Now, what we, with the $200,000...
Oh, you're double miking it over there tonight, okay.
I, with the $200,000, I'll go back to Shelley Simpson, our Recreation Director, to, to visit with her about what projects we do have teed up, to see if we can get the, to get the dollars obligated. So, a purchase order or something, it would be a, it would be a multitude of projects that don't require...
Bidding.
The, the state bid. We still do, have a purchasing policy and go out and get three quotes, et cetera, but we wouldn't have to. The state bid just takes time.
Can, can, can we do that before the end of the year?
Yeah, well, I, I, I will be on the, I, I will be on the phone with her tomorrow morning.
Right, but, but...
And I think even if we...
Are we saying that these funds are going to be allocated even if we don't get quotes in by the end of the year?
So, the backup plan would be to allocate it to the Centennial project.
Okay.
When's that part that's already ready to go? What, what was the part that you have already lined up at Centennial?
The whole, the whole contract's been approved, so...
Okay, so we can just add it to the full mix?
Yes.
I, I think, and honestly, despite what I said about not wanting to allocate money to something that, that we don't know what it looks like, I would honestly be in favor of putting some more money into affordable housing. But if the consensus is what Brian has proposed, I, I can get behind that.
Okay. I think we had it before I asked you, but I wanted to hear those comments. I think that's very thoughtful to, to wrap this up. So, you guys have what you need now?
Do we need to make a decision on the, or did we already, on the 400 for the affordable housing?
We already did.
That was prior to you and I, yeah.
Yeah, that was prior to you guys being here.
Good.
Yep, done.
We're just going to leave it that way it was.
Katie, thanks for your time and being here tonight to help us through this. I think this was, I'm hoping that it'll surprise us in the years to come, what these dollars can do for our community. Okay. Moving on to item 12. Thanks for sticking around, you guys, back there in the, in the corner. Hodge Construction Company rezoning item A is motion to remove from the table. Just in a motion to...
So moved.
Sorry.
Seconded.
Moved by Sittig, seconded by everybody else. Item B is our public hearing regarding, I'm sorry, oh, I'm sorry, we got to vote on this stuff. Thank you. Voice vote? All in favor of coming, yeah, thank you?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Okay. Item B then is our public hearing regarding proposed rezoning. Is there anyone in the audience needing, wanting to make comment on this rezoning request? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Item C then is our first consideration of ordinance number 2024-10, an ordinance amending the zoning map district designation for certain property located in North Liberty, Iowa, from RM 21 multi-unit residence district to C3 higher intensity commercial district. Could I have a motion for consideration, please?
So moved.
Seconded.
Moved by Park, seconded by Leibold. Are there any questions that Hodge is here, and they, I think, met all of the hopes and dreams that we had out there?
No, no questions for me, just a comment, really appreciate the effort, Hodge Construction and, and staff as well to, to get to this. And I know it was a couple of weeks, three weeks delay, but that's appreciated, and it was clear, straightforward, and easily digestible for us, so, thank you.
And to be clear, this, this motion, or this ordinance includes the limits, correct? Okay. And I also want to thank you for being flexible and willing to, to work with us. Helps a lot. And I would...
Mayor, out of it.
I, I would also, sorry, Brent, I would also suggest that we waive the, the third reading next, next time, just to, to keep things moving forward, since we had discussion on this last time.
Sounds good. Go ahead, Brent.
Yeah, Mayor, so, that, thank you, Eric, that was one of my points, was to waive the third. And this is just another example of how the City of North Liberty staff and the developers that, that work with us can do great things. When we had concerns, we brought those up, we talked those through, and we came to a great consensus, and allowing a fantastic project to go forth, instead of killing something out of fear of what could have been. It is our, our welcoming business environment that we have here in North Liberty, and we're open for business. And we appreciate Hodge doing business with us and working with us.
Good points. Any other comments?
Nope, just to appreciate them working on that. It's an interesting-looking project. I disagree that that's the place to put it, though.
Tracy, could we have roll call, please?
Leibold?
Aye.
Sittig?
Aye.
Wason?
No.
Park?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
First consideration carries four to one. It passes, thank you. Item 13 is administrative rezoning, and item A is public hearing regarding proposed rezoning. Is there anyone in the audience wishing to make comment on this proposed rezoning? Close the public hearing. Item B is staff and commission recommendations, Russ.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This was a mistake that the city made in reviewing of a building permit, showed a, in addition to the rear of the building with a 22-foot rear yard setback. That permit was approved. The error wasn't discovered until the foundation was poured, and certainly, we reacted as quickly as we could. We stopped the work on there to, to fix the problem, at least to offer a solution to fix the problem. We, we talked about a few items. We did talk about potential for a hardship variance. We didn't feel confident it would meet the standards for a hardship variance. And so, the next thing we offered to move forward was an administrative rezoning with a PAD to waive that rear setback just for that addition. So, that's, that's what we're offering you today. It's an unfortunate mistake. We are human, and we put some safeguards in place to hopefully prevent that in the future. But, Planning Commission did consider it at its November meeting, and unanimously recommended approval. So, we recommend approval as well. Thank you.
Yep, thank you. Any questions for Russ? We're going to move on to the consideration next. We can talk about it more there as well. Go ahead, any questions?
More of a comment, just, I would like to waive, if possible, the second and third for this, so they can continue to move forward with their project.
Well, we won't be able to do that tonight, because it's not on the agenda, but we can fast-track it for the, we can put an agenda item on that for the next one to skip the third.
Yep, that's a good point.
Just a comment from me, really appreciate the due diligence and, and the acknowledgement, and also the sending, hey, you know what, here's how we move forward, both with some of the comment that was received from the public, and then also as an internal staff. So, recognizing and acknowledging that, hey, you know what, here's what we're doing, here's what happened, here's what we're doing going forward, I think is a testament to the staff here, that it's an illustration of the quality staff that we have when that happens. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, I'd move the first consideration.
Thanks, Eric.
Seconded.
Been moved and seconded. And, and I'll just take a moment to thank you, Russ, for the information in your email. It provided some context. And I like to see people's thoughts in writing, so it really helped me to gain some insight as to what, how you got here on that. So, that was helpful to me.
Appreciate the feedback.
Could I...
Mayor?
Oh, sorry, Brent, go ahead.
With discussion, I just want to publicly, the contractor did reach out to me, was obviously, you know, disappointed, but was very grateful for the, for the flexibility of staff in, in trying to remedy the situation. So, again, echoing all the comments already for Russ and his team, and again, back to Paul's point, they are looking just to get that covered before the freeze thaw cycle that could really bust up the concrete. So, if we, I know I asked the contractor to reach out to Russ again today for consideration on some of his requests, so I'm sure he's working with that. But then, fast-tracking the second and third, as, as stated, I think would be helpful to be able to get that done before the hard freeze, so thank you.
You got it. Tracy, could we have roll call, please, on this consideration?
Park?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Wason?
Aye.
Leibold?
Aye.
Sittig?
Aye.
Motion carries five zero. Item 14 is a forevering road, forevering roundabout easement, excuse me. Item A is resolution number 2024-105, and this is a resolution approving the temporary construction easement agreement between DRS Investments LLC and the City of North Liberty. Could I have a motion for consideration, please?
So moved.
Seconded.
Moved by Park, seconded by Sittig. Are there any questions about this? Tracy, could I have roll call, please?
Sittig?
Aye.
Wason?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Park?
Aye.
Leibold?
Aye.
Motion carries five zero. Item 15 is the Iowa DOT pre-construction agreement, and item A is resolution number 2024-106, a resolution approving the pre-construction agreement between the Iowa Department of Transportation and the City of North Liberty. Could I have a motion for consideration, please?
So moved.
Seconded.
Moved by Sittig, seconded by Smith. Any questions about this? Tracy, roll call, please?
Smith?
Aye.
Sittig?
Aye.
Wason?
Aye.
Park?
Aye.
Leibold?
Aye.
Motion carries five zero. Item 16 is our FY26 tax increment financing TIF request, and item A is resolution number 2024-107, a resolution obligating funds from the Urban Renewal Tax Revenue Fund for appropriation to the payment of annual appropriation tax increment financed obligations, which shall come due in the next succeeding fiscal year. Could I have a motion for consideration, please?
So moved.
Moved by Smith?
Seconded.
Second, Wason's closest to me, I'm going to give it to him on this one. Any questions about this? Tracy, could I have roll call, please?
Park?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Wason?
Aye.
Sittig?
Aye.
Leibold?
Aye.
Motion carries five zero. And item B is discussion and possible action on the annual urban renewal funds request for FY26. Ryan, can you tell us what you need us to do here, or Grant?
Yes. We just need a, a approval of the TIF indebtedness report that's in your packet. So, that report is showing how much TIF revenue, which includes the rebate you just approved earlier, that we'll need an FY26 to pay our obligations. It's both incentive, business incentive rebates and debt payment.
Thank you. Grant, voice vote on this fine, or do you want us to do full-on roll call?
Roll call.
Okay, thank you. Did everybody understand what Ryan was just saying, what we're asking here to just approve this report? Okay, could I have a motion for us to do that, please?
So moved.
Seconded.
Moved by Sittig, seconded by Wason. Any questions? Tracy, roll call, please.
Wason?
Aye.
Leibold?
Aye.
Park?
Aye.
Sittig?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Motion carries five zero. Item 17 is library board appointment, and item A is affirmation of the mayor's appointment of Kara Flynn to the library board. You guys good with that? Okay, heads nodding, Grant, is that enough?
It is, it is enough. You get to do it. You just did it.
Beautiful.
Not actually subject to their approval.
Done. They just affirmed it.
They don't even need to do that.
Okay, all right, good. I won't tell them any more stories. And our last item is item 18, North Jones LLC rezoning, and this is the second consideration of ordinance number 2024-11, an ordinance amending the zoning map district designation for certain property located in North Liberty, Iowa, from RM 8 multi-unit residence district to RM 12 multi-unit residence district. Could I have a motion for our second consideration, please?
So moved.
Seconded.
Moved by Park, seconded by Leibold. Any questions about this? Tracy, roll call, please.
Park?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Sittig?
Aye.
Wason?
Aye.
Leibold?
Aye.
Motion carries. Item 19 is old business. Anything to...
I just have one thing, real quick.
Yep, please.
$5,000 we gave to UAY and FY25.
Yes. Oh, to answer your question.
To answer your question, thank you.
Sorry.
That was definitely old business, so that was helpful, and kind of current business, so. Any other old business? Item 20 is our new business?
Love to see the city all turned purple on Friday, if that's possible.
See what we can do.
The magic button. Item 21 is a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Seconded.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? We are adjourned.
Thank you.